Okay, we are live. Let me start the recording.
Okay, good to go.
We are live.
Okay, good morning, everyone. This is a public hearing being held by the Pinelands Commission on Tuesday, July 15th, 2025. I'm going to read a little bit from the official public notice and give a brief.
Sorry.
Brief summary of the amendments and a few procedural notes, and I'm going to turn it over to Paul, who's running the hearing this morning, to give some instructions for those of you who want to call in and provide oral testimony this morning. So the hearing is being held on the proposed amendments to the Pinelands Comprehensive Management Plan. Those amendments relate to a package of revisions to our rules, including those relating to application fees, expiration of certain documents issued by the commission, standards for the use of Pinelands Development Credits and zoning plans in Pinelands Regional Growth Areas, a series of minor clarifications and updates, and a change to our land capability map. I'll give a few more details in a moment, but just some procedural guidance. We are taking oral comments this morning. The proposal has been published in the New Jersey Register. That was done in June, June 16th, so we're in our 60-day comment period. This is the opportunity for oral comments. Written comments can be submitted and have been submitted for the last month, and those aren't due until August 15th, so even after the hearing today, there's still a month for people to submit comments. We encourage the use of email. Instructions for submitting written comments are on the website, so you can submit those directly through our website. So in terms of the amendments themselves, a little more detail. There are some revisions to our application fee requirements, primarily involving applications that are submitted to resolve identified violations of Pinelands Regulations. A small increase in fees for applications involving waivers of strict compliance. And we are revising application fees associated with letters of interpretation for things like wetlands, wetlands buffers, and other interpretations of permitted use standards. For example, the amendments would also assign expiration dates for the first time to waivers of strict compliance granted by the commission prior to March 2nd of 1992. Also to what we call completeness documents, mostly certificates of filing that are issued by the commission on private development applications. Up until this point, they have had no expiration date. They live forever. The amendments would assign a five-year lifespan to certificates of filing and go back to those that were issued prior 2004. All of those would expire upon adoption of the rule, which simply means that new applications would need to be submitted. And after, you know, 20, 25 years, we think that that's warranted at this point in time. There are some amendments that basically codify longstanding practice of the commission that allow towns, municipalities with regional growth areas some flexibility, additional flexibility to change the zoning in their regional growth areas, increase densities, accommodate mixed-use housing types, shift obligations for the use of Pinelands Development Credits around from different zones to different uses, including non-residential development. These are all things that towns have been able to do to some extent over the past years, but we would like the rules to actually reflect that and provide some certainty in terms of what the standards are. There's a variety of other minor clarifications and updates that I won't mention. And then, Paul, if you could share the maps on the screen. I want to just highlight the mapping change that the commission has proposed, because I suspect that's why you're all going to be calling in today, and I want to make sure everybody is clear on what the amendment does and doesn't do. So you can see here the maps. These are showing an area in the southern portion of Evesham Township in the Pinelands area. The colors on the map correspond to Pinelands Management Area designations. So on the left, you see an area outlined in red. It's currently yellow, which means it's currently designated as what we call overall development area in our rules and in Evesham Township zoning plan. That's the area that our proposed change to the land capability map would revise that designation so that it would be green, as you see on the right. Green is our Pinelands Forest Area designation. We thought showing these two maps would highlight the entirety of the area. It's about 2,400 acres that would be re-designated from rural development to forest area. Most of the area, 60% or so, is already preserved, including what everyone knows as the Black Run Preserve. That land is already preserved and in municipal ownership. There's also additional public lands included in this boundary that are preserved. There are about 990 acres, though, of privately owned land within this red boundary that are not preserved. Those would also be affected by the map change. They're located in the Black Run Watershed, which really encompasses most of this area. That's what the commission is interested in providing more protection to. And I just want to make sure that everybody is understanding that this is a mapping change. It is not a development application. The hearing this morning is not on any particular development application. It is strictly on this mapping change, the effect of which would be to reduce the permitted residential density and development potential in the area on the privately owned lands. It is not a guarantee that those lands would be developed or preserved. It is strictly a mapping change to reduce the number of units that would be permitted in the area should someone decide to proceed with development on any of these 990 acres that are not yet preserved. So let's see, what else? So I just want to make sure everybody is commenting on the map change, not on any development application that you may have heard about or any particular project that may have been proposed over the years or that you may believe is forthcoming to the commission. That's not what the hearing is about this morning. And then, finally, just a reminder. We have received, the commission has already received probably 80 or so written comments on the proposed amendments, almost all of which are related to the map change that you're seeing on the screen. I want to assure everyone who submitted those written comments that they are considered part of our formal record. Copies of all of them will be provided to the Pinelands Commission, our board, when they proceed to the end of this rulemaking process and are considering the amendments for adoption. They will have those comments in front of them and be able to read them for themselves. If you have submitted written comment, there's no need to reiterate your comments today at the hearing, because we already have them as part of the record. So I'll just make that suggestion, and if we've already commented, you don't need to do so again, because we've heard your comments. We've received them, and they're part of our record. We are expecting a large number of callers this morning, so I just thought I'd make that note. And that's really it for me. I think, Paul, if you want to take the maps down and put up the slide, I'll throw the call in. Give people some ground rules for how to participate.
All right. All right. Good morning, everybody. I have the call-in number on the screen. There will, I know we have over 130 people streaming right now on YouTube, and I know we have a group who will be calling, who have assembled at one of the Pinelands Preservation Alliance's buildings, and we have advice in that we will field their call toward the end after we field the other calls, so that we have a smooth transition and are able to get to everybody. There will be a three-minute limit on comments today. I will let people know when it's time to wrap up. And I'm going to ask that people provide their name and then also spell their name for us, so that we can get it for the record. All right, and with that, I'm going to let in the first caller. Good morning, caller. You are live in our meeting. Can you please state your name for the record and provide your spelling? Good morning, caller. Can you hear us? You are live in our meeting. Okay, I'm not hearing anything from that caller. Good morning, caller. You are live in our meeting. Okay, let's move on to the next caller and then ask them to call back later. Okay. And one other note. I do see at least one person who has attempted to join our meeting on Zoom. Please do not do that. Please call in with the number that's on the screen, so that we can get everyone in order. All right, next caller. Good morning, caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record and provide the spelling?
Hello?
Hi there. You are live in our hearing. Please state your name and spelling of your name for the record.
Hi, it's Dave Storms, D-A-V-E-S-T-O-R-M-S.
Okay, floor is yours.
Hi, thank you for giving me the time to speak. As I mentioned, my name is Dave Storms, and I would like to register my support for re-designating the Black Run Watershed to a Pinelands Forest Area. I think it's important to preserve this ecosystem and would love to see it, you know, maintain an intact ecosystem for, you know, my family and my kids and their kids going forward. So thank you for your time and thank you for giving me the space.
Okay, thank you very much. Next caller. Good morning, caller. Could you please mute your computer?
Yes, hi.
Hi, can you please state your name for the record and the spelling of your name? You are live.
Yes, hi. Okay, my name is Tina Cooper. My spelling is T-I-N-A-C-O-O-P-E-R.
Okay, thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you so much, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak on behalf and advocate for the Black Run Preserve today. My comments are more of a personal anecdote. I spend a great deal of time in nature, and the Black Run Preserve happens to be my most cherished place on earth. By design, our home is a five-minute drive from the Preserve, and depending on the season, I hike there anywhere from five to 25 miles a week and have done so persistently since 2017. So that amounts to an average of about 780 miles per year and grand total of about 6,240 miles in eight years I hike there. So I care deeply about this place, and I've come to know it as a dear friend, and I've learned a great deal about its various habitats, its plant life, and its wildlife. The Black Run Preserve has inspired me to learn all about our state's ecological treasure, the New Jersey Pine Barrens. And on a much more personal note, as someone who struggles with mental health, my need for this special place runs especially deep. The Preserve has saved my life on more than one occasion, and it has given me a sense of purpose. So today, I just want to say thank you to the Pinelands Commission for taking the steps to protect the headwaters of this wonderful tract of our beloved Pine Barrens by amending the Pinelands Land Capability Map and re-designating the surrounding lands as Pinelands Forest Area. I implore you to act with expediency and see this endeavor through to completion. By doing so, you will protect the Black Run Preserve and its headwaters, so it can thrive and continue to be a source of peace and inspiration for all for many years to come. And so, thank you again. I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Next caller. Good morning, caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record and provide the spelling of your name, please?
Good morning. My name is Megan, M-A-E-G-A-N, Coolman, K-U-H-L-M-A-N-N.
All right, thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to provide comments today. So I'm a resident of the Township of Verona, and I'm testifying today with the New Jersey Sierra Club. As the country's oldest and largest grassroots environmental organization, Sierra Club was founded on the basis of getting out into nature and strengthening our connection with it. Any sort of development on this parcel of land, if it's not rezoned, would cause irreparable harm to community recreation activities, native wildlife, and water quality. So I strongly urge the New Jersey Pinelands Commission to re-designate the land for any proposed developments to a Pinelands Forest Area. Growing up in New Jersey, any friends and family who came to visit would always comment on how silly it is that we're named the Garden State, but I think that's because so many people miss the incredible awe-inspiring natural beauty and ecological density of preserves like the Black Run and the Pinelands. The Black Run Preserve is a keystone of the Pinelands National Reserve and contains unique ecology in the critical Kirkwood Cohansi Aquifer System. Freshwater from the 17-trillion gallon system spans all but the entirety of Southern Jersey and feeds into coastal estuaries such as Barnegat Bay and the Delaware River Estuary. And these ecosystems are essential to mitigating flooding and coastal erosion. Further, the shallow nature of this aquifer means it's easily polluted. So any proposals to develop the forest directly adjacent to the Preserve, if it wasn't to be rezoned, would threaten not just the aquifer and the drinking water of over a million New Jerseians, but the entirety of the area's natural, ecological, scenic, cultural, and recreational resources. And without rezoning, allowing development in this area would go directly against the CMP's own regulations and standards, which promise the opposite. And as we know already, similar zoning changes to protect the land around the Black Run Preserve have already been enshrined in the neighboring Medford Township. I strongly support the Pinelands Commission's amendment to re-designate the Black Run Watershed and Evesham Township from a Pinelands Rural Development Area to a Pinelands Forest Area to ensure the health of current and future generations, along with the forest and its inhabitants. So thank you again for your time to submit my comments today.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next caller. Good morning, caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record and provide the spelling of your name, please?
Hello, my name is Kyle, K-Y-L-E, Novoa, N-O-V-O-A.
Okay, very well. The floor is yours.
I just wanted to call in to express my desire to keep this land protected. If it's opened up for developments, it will likely be developed in some capacity, and that will lead to like just devastation to the local wildlife through the pollution to the aquifers and stuff. It's stuff that can't, we can't, like, there's no going back once it started. So I wanted to put in the strongest possible terms my opposition to rezoning this to be even allowed for development.
Okay. All right, is that some of your comments today?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right. Good morning, caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record and provide the spelling of your name, please? Good morning, caller. You are live in our meeting, in our hearing. Can you please state your name for the record? Can you hear us? Okay.
State your name for the record and provide the spelling of your name, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, could you mute your computer, please? Yes.
Good morning, caller.
Yes.
Yes, it's muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes, it was playing back. Okay, yes, can you please state your name for the record and provide the spelling?
Sure, hi, my name is Jessica Van Liere, J-E-S-S-I-C-A, Van Liere, V-A-N-L-I-E-R-E, calling in as a local resident, a lifetime South Jersey resident. I was born and raised in Evesham, so I have a very vested interest in the Black Run Preserve. It is the only and closest place that you can go to be in nature. So just as some others have said, it's super important for the health of residents to just have a place to be in nature. I also have very serious concerns about water quality. I've watched, as I said, you know, over my lifetime, the extreme buildup of Evesham, and so I really hope and support the re-designation of this area as forest area to give, you know, some more protection to it, because Evesham, you can look on that map, is just, you know, totally fragmented, totally built up. Highway, we have, you know, tons of runoff. I'm worried about the ability of Evesham to meet the water needs of all of these people. We're already overpopulated. So just preserving this, designating this as a forest area is just one more step, I think, to protect these Black Run Watershed, the headwaters, and, you know, all the species that are found there, which I know don't generate money for anyone, but I hope that we can find other ways to bring in revenue that don't involve destroying this wonderful natural place that so many of us rely on. And if you don't go there, I can tell you it's so full of people all the time who are enjoying it and just getting the peace and quiet that they need away from the cars and the noise and the pollution of this area. So I ask you to consider that in this re-designation, and I thank the Pinelands Commission for your service.
All right. Thank you for your comment. And we're going to move on to the next caller. Good morning, caller. Can you mute your computer?
...in your, this re-designation, and I thank the Pinelands Commission for your service.
Hello?
Good morning, caller. Can you mute your computer? Thank you.
Yes.
And then, please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name, please.
Sure, thank you. My name is Jackie Greger, J-A-C-K-I-E-G-R-E-G-E-R.
All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments today. I am a resident of Manchester Township and testifying today as Communications and Outreach Coordinator at New Jersey Sierra Club. The Sierra Club is the nation's oldest and largest grassroots environmental organization and supports affordable housing. However, it must be built sustainably for both the communities living in these developments and the local environment. The New Jersey Sierra Club strongly supports the New Jersey Pinelands Commission's amendment to re-designate the land adjacent to the Black Run Preserve to a Pinelands Forest Area. Growing up in Manchester, my high school backed up to the Pine Barrens, and although this was more north, I've seen firsthand the beauty, ecological significance, and importance of the Pinelands to communities across South Jersey. Black Run Preserve and the surrounding lands and public forests are essential to maintaining the clean drinking water of residents. These acres of land include the Rankoas Creek Headwaters, which is critical freshwater coming from the Kirkwood Cohansi Aquifer, which supplies clean drinking water to millions of residents, agriculture and businesses in South Jersey, and for the unique ecosystem in the Pine Barrens. The Black Run Preserve and its surrounding forest is essential to keeping the drinking water clean as wetlands are able to filter pollutants naturally before they enter people's homes. New Jerseians have a right to clean water, and the proposed development threatening these acres of land would jeopardize the future of that water supply for generations to come. This land also provides critical wildlife habitat and is a recreational resource for communities across South Jersey and in Philadelphia. There are several endangered species that would be further harmed if this development were to bulldoze the forest, including the Pine Barrens tree frog, the northern pine snake, barred owl, woodland box turtle, and the timber rattlesnake. Our public lands are under attack from every angle, and New Jersey is already grossly overdeveloped. We must do everything we can to ensure the way we build affordable housing in our state is smart and sustainable and does not bulldoze our precious forest for the sake of meeting the quota. We can find a better solution than this. This development would do irreversible harm to the Black Run Preserve, the Pinelands ecosystem, and the overall watershed. Thank you for amending the zoning map, and the New Jersey Sierra Club strongly supports the commission's amendment to re-designate the Black Run Watershed in Evesham Township from a Pinelands Rural Development Area to a Pinelands Forest Area to protect it from harm for the sake of clean water, public health, our forest, wetlands, and wildlife. Thank you again for your time and the opportunity to submit my comments today.
All right, thank you for your comment. All right, moving on to the next caller.
...to the Black Run Preserve.
Good morning, caller. Can you mute your computer, please? Good morning, caller.
Hi, yeah.
Can you state and spell it for the record?
Yes, Vanessa Marraco, V-A-N-E-S-S-A-M-A-R-R-O-C-C-O.
All right, thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of the Black Run Preserve. As a lifelong New Jersey resident, protected natural areas like this have meant so much to me. I grew up hiking in places like the Pine Barrens, and they've shaped my appreciation for the environment and my sense of home. I strongly support the change in designation from rural development area to forest area. This shift is essential to protect the water quality in the Black Run Watershed, one of the most pristine streams in the state. Development under the current designation could do real harm. The area also supports threatened and endangered species and serves as a critical infiltration zone for groundwater, something we can't afford to compromise, especially as droughts become more common. Again, thank you so much for allowing me to speak, and I care deeply about this land, and I urge the commission to continue protecting it for the future generations. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment. All right, next caller.
...for groundwater.
Good morning, caller. Can you mute your computer, please?
Especially as droughts become more common. Again, thank you so much for allowing me to.
Hello?
Yes, good morning. Can you mute your computer, please?
Yes, I can.
All right, thank you. All right, can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling, please?
Yes, my name is Kevin Papa, spelled K-E-V-I-N. Last name is P-A-P-A. I want to thank you for giving some moment to speech. I strongly support re-designation to forest land for this area, and I think the callers before me and after have done a good job of showing how consistent the opposition to redevelopment of this land is. But I want to point out the devastating floods that we had last night and in the past. Wetlands like this help break that flooding cycle and help absorb a lot of water. And when you develop this type of land, especially this large amount of area, there's nowhere for that water to go beyond the drinking water, endangered animals, protected land we already have. I think there's a duty to protect this type of land for the ability to prevent or mitigate some of these floods that we're going to see more and more often. And I think that people forget that New Jersey is a coastal plain largely, and we need land like this to not be developed, not just for personal recreation or for animals and wildlife, which is obviously very important. There's endangered animals there, and there's many people that will sit here and tell you how they've spent their life in those preserves. But again, for the aspect of flooding, this is something that is important to the township and surrounding areas because it just protects us a little bit more from some of these devastating things that we literally saw less than 24 hours ago. So I don't want to repeat, but I will say that I echo a lot of the things that were said before me, and I am proud of everyone for voicing their opposition to redevelopment, and I want to thank you for giving me some time to speak today.
All right, well, thank you. And let's move to our next caller. Good morning, caller. Can you please mute your computer? Thank you. Good morning, caller. You are live in our hearing. Can you please mute your computer? Good morning, caller. Can you please state your name for the record and provide the spelling? You are live. Can you hear me? You are live in our meeting, in our hearing.
Me, am I?
Yes, that is you.
Okay.
Name for the record, including the spelling?
Sure. My name is Denise Brush, D-E-N-I-S-E-B-R-U-S-H. I'm a resident of Washington Township in Gloucester County. I'm a volunteer with Food and Water Watch and several other organizations. I'm very concerned about how our water supply in South Jersey will be affected if developers are allowed to start building housing in the Black Run Reserve. I want to make three main points. First, water quality. Water quality is already compromised in South Jersey by the forever chemicals in our groundwater, by incinerators and landfills, and by multiple historical superfund sites. The Black Run Reserve is currently a pristine stream. Unless the Black Run Reserve is designated as a permanent forest area, development that would further degrade its water quality is highly likely to occur. Therefore, I strongly support the proposed zoning designation change to forest area to not allow development. Secondly, we all want and expect a plentiful supply of clean drinking water. The Black Run Reserve is a landmark in the state. The Black Run Reserve is a major water infiltration point for our area, and maintaining adequate groundwater supplies is critical for all of us in South Jersey. Unfortunately, there have been recent threats to the Kirkwood Cohansi Aquifer, whose groundwater supplies most of South Jersey, as others have mentioned. Um, Winslow, a town located not far from the Pinelands, is currently suing the Pinelands Commission to allow businesses and developers to drain the aquifer. This lawsuit seeks to strike down the Pineland Commission's common sense regulations that protect the aquifer. And finally, I want to say that converting forests that provide critical ecological functions into housing developments is a terrible idea. Building unnecessary luxury homes will only benefit the developers. It will hurt everyone else. New Jersey needs more affordable housing, not more luxury housing. And local government should be changing their zoning codes to permit infill development. The smartest way to build affordable housing is to build multifamily housing on previously developed land that already has connections to water and sewer lines, electricity, public transportation, and so on. There are plenty of empty business sites in every town and city in New Jersey just waiting to be developed. All you have to do is change the zoning. The important point I want to make here is we need to keep our few remaining pristine rivers, forests, and wild areas undeveloped while we still can, or we will regret it later. Thank you for the opportunity to submit my comments.
All right, thank you for your comment. Let's move on to the next caller. Good morning caller, can you mute your computer, please? Thank you.
Yes.
Can you please state your name for the record and provide the spelling?
Yes, my name is Jessica. Yes, my name is Jessica Bader, J E S S I C A. B is in boy, A D is in dog, E R.
All right, thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Yes, I am a resident of Camden County, and I would like to voice my support to designate the Black Run Preserve area on the map as a protected Pinelands Forest Area. This entire area of New Jersey is under threat of losing more and more natural space every year. And I want to fight against development in any forested area left in my state, as there is plenty of already developed abandoned lots that could be redeveloped. So we can leave all of our natural space that is little left completely alone. Um, as it helps with clean air, flood prevention, and especially wildlife. Um, I would love to protect this area as I am a birder, and I come to Black Run Preserve, especially during migration time, and, um, as you may know, birds will be flying overnight and during migration period. And if they don't see enough green space, they won't land. And so I really appreciate birding in this area, and I would like to keep as much space protected as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your call. Let's move on to the next caller. Good morning caller, can you please mute your computer? Good morning caller, you are live in our hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling, please?
Hi, my name is Lee L E A Dixon, D I X O N. Um, I was calling because I do think that the development should be changed over to forest due to the fact that the Black Run Preserve should be protected, along with, um, so I have a little speech here, I would like to say, which is history is not always marked by monuments or plaques. Sometimes it lives quietly in the land, in the patterns of the trees, the untouched soil, the places long overlooked. The Milford Settlement, which is a part of the Black Run Preserve and around it, is one of the Evesham's oldest historical areas, yet it remains unrecognized and unprotected. This site reflects the legacy of those who've lived and built here. Even if no buildings remain, it's value lies not in what is visible, but what it represents, a piece of a shared past. Other areas of the town are commemorated, but this area isn't, and now we're talking about bulldozing over it. To allow development here is to erase a chapter of our history. Once that connection is gone, it cannot be restored. We owe it to future generations to preserve this land as a place of memory, learning, and respect. Let us not trade our history for short-term gain, and let us honor it by preserving it. And I thank you very much for your time today.
All right, thank you for your comment.
Have a good one.
On to the next caller. Good morning caller, you are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling, please?
Hi, my name is Denise Peach, D E N I S E P I E T S C H. Um, I just wanted to call and express my support to protect the Black Run Preserve, um, and echo everybody else's sentiments. It's, you know, such an important piece of land for, um, our animals, wildlife, um, the community. And, um, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for your comment. Moving on to the next caller. Good morning caller, can you please?
Everybody else's sentiments, just, you know, such an important.
Good morning caller, can you mute your computer?
Our animals, wildlife.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, thank you for your talk.
All right, thank you.
Hi.
Hi, can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling?
Sure, my name is Julia, J U L I A Gandy, G A N D Y.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, I'm calling, I actually grew up in Marlton Lakes, um, which is right there near the Black Run Preserve. I grew up, um, riding, driving up, um, Kettle Run Road to get to school, to get to church, to get to my friend's house. Um, and I I echo everyone's, um, what they're saying about preserving the Black Run Preserve as and designating it as a Pinelands Forest. And one of the things that worries me, if it is designated as, you know, to change as a, um, development site, is that Kettle Run Road itself would have to be widened. Um, there would be dramatic changes to the whole area of, um, just to increase the traffic to this, this, um, if houses were were built. Um, and that would destroy the cranberry bogs, that would destroy all of the the growth along the, um, the whole road. So, um, you know, I think Marlton and Evesham Township, I I've lived there since 1971, and it's changed dramatically, as everyone has said, the the buildings, the houses, the shops, the stores. Um, we need this area to to be preserved and allow the, you know, the waters, the animals to to stay and, um, to have their homes safe. So I thank you for the time.
All right, thank you for your comment. And moving on to the next caller.
Forty-one.
Good morning caller, can you please mute your computer?
As everyone has said, the buildings, the houses, the shops, the stores.
Good morning caller, can you please mute your computer?
To be preserved and...
Good morning caller, can you please state your name for the record, including your spelling? You are live in our meeting.
My name is, okay, my name is Mary Pyrell, P E Y E R L.
All right, thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Okay, I would like to, uh, start out by thanking you for allowing us to, uh, reach out and and speak about this matter. I am also going to say that everyone who already has spoke had great points. I have lived in Evesham for six years, and I've lived in the same area, give or take a few miles. Uh, my family owned all of, uh, the property behind Little Mill Golf Course, which connected, actually, to the, to the Black Forest Run. And, uh, over the years, I've watched development constantly around this area. My grandchildren are sixth generation children that live in Evesham Township. Uh, we live on the border now. We actually have ponds on our property that are the Mollica River, because we live at the lowest end of the township now. My husband and I have lived here for 47 years. We've had ponds. My husband keeps it like a park, and all the wildlife live there. We're finding more and more pollution coming into our ponds, which is definitely affecting the ecosystem of the area. This is due to the fact that there's so many developed properties that surround us. Now, I know this isn't the Mollica River we're talking about. We're talking about the, uh, the waters that are all the cranberry bogs, which I've, as just the last person said, I've driven down that road probably a million times growing up. The problem is, we're seeing what happens with development in the ecosystem. We have actually, we are seeing actually suds coming into our ponds where we have fish and turtles, and the deer, and all the other wildlife are there. That's what happens. The road runoff from these developments is a big, big issue. Also, the people use pesticides on their lawns. Everyone's lawn, we left our property completely natural so that we could keep the nature the way it is. Um, but that's not the case with all the surrounding people around us. They have used so many different things on their lawns. They have landscapers constantly taking care of everything. And the road runoff, the oil from the vehicles is also a problem. Uh, the cars that are gonna go down, I don't believe, honestly, the Kettle Run Road can be widened. Uh, there is, uh, wetlands on both sides. I'm hoping not. Uh, but that would be a problem. There should be a study of the, uh, the traffic would be tremendous. My husband and I have lived in this, the street of Raymond Avenue our whole lives. And guess what? The traffic, you can't even get your mail because of GPS. So the traffic going down Hopewell Road is exactly the same coming through Kettle Run. This is a major problem. There would have to be traffic lights. The school buses would have to be rerouted. All those things are a problem. And thank you for letting me speak. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next caller. Good morning caller, you are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Yeah, my name is Leonard Morleino, L E O N A R D. Last name Morleino, M O R L I N O.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Um, hello, um, I haven't really been listening in. I've been busy in other meetings, but I wanted to make sure I called in to to voice, uh, my concerns about the the proposed, um, development in the, uh, in around surrounding the Black Run area that's, uh, currently, uh, um, owned by the Samos family. So I am concerned, we are, uh, I'm right there on 235 Flamingo in the Sturbridge Lakes. That's the proposed area of development is, uh, all around us. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that I voiced my objection to any future development plans in there. And I understand there is some discussion, uh, about potentially, um, purchasing it, uh, to preserve the land and change the CMP and whatnot. And I really do hope that the Pinelands Commission, um, does entertain that seriously. And and we really hope that that does, uh, come to fruition. Um, it is an amazing, um, piece of, uh, of land. It's 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 unique. And I know I'm speaking to the choir with this, but it would be a shame to let an opportunity like this, uh, go, um, to to add to that, uh, preserves, preservation efforts. Um, and I really hope that happens. Uh, it's it's not something that we can recover. It's, you can't undo it once it's done. And, you know, when we look at the, uh, um, the trade-offs for the environment, um, for for the the beauty of the area, the diversity, there's lots of, uh, diversity there. Um, it's it's a national treasure, and and we need to do whatever we can to protect it. Um, so I do hope that happens. And I appreciate all you guys' efforts. Again, I know I'm preaching to the choir. I know that's probably what everybody wants. Um, whether or not, uh, there's enough, um, political will to allow it to happen, uh, that's up for debate. I don't know. But, um, please do everything you can to preserve it. Um, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Let's move to the next caller. Good morning caller, can you please mute your computer? Thank you.
Hi.
You're live in our meeting. Could you please state your name for the record, including the spelling, please?
Yes, my name is Katie, K A T I E Prutzman, P R U T Z M A N. Um, I just wanted to say I agree, um, with most things that have been shared this morning and support the continued protection of the Black Run Preserve in New Jersey. It's a vital natural resource that provides ecological, educational, and recreational benefits to our community. It's a rare example of a preserved Pineland Barrens habitat and plays a critical role in safeguarding biodiversity, protecting water quality, and offering residents a place to connect with nature, which is disappearing across New Jersey. Um, I also speak on behalf of the countless species of wildlife that call Black Run home, creatures who cannot dial into, call, or sign a petition to beg us to protect their habitat. It's our responsibility to be stewards of the land, not only for ourselves and future generations, but for the thriving web of life that depends on it. Thank you so much for holding this hearing and allowing me to speak today.
All right, thank you for your comment. All right. We have two people who just provided comments. If you could hang up for us, and then I'm gonna get to the next person. Okay. Good morning caller, you are live in our hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Uh, my name is Alex Meder, M E D E R, um, and live in Marlton. Um, and I just wanted to also say that I support designating Black Run Preserve, um, as a Pinelands Forest Area. Um, we really do need to protect our drinking water and protect the wildlife, which has lost so much habitat, habitat already. Um, and again, like other people have said, there are plenty of other already developed areas, um, that have been abandoned that can be, um, transformed. Um, this is a special, unique area. Uh, we should be caring for it and not, you know, potentially destroying it. Um, again, it'll increase the traffic, which is already pretty bad now. I mean, you drive down in between Black Run, and cars are speeding, and there's like a lot of traffic already, and we'll just be adding to that. Um, so please protect, um, the Black Run Preserve and keep it as a, um, or make it a Pinelands Forest Area. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment. All right, moving on to the next caller. Good morning caller, you are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
My name is Patrick, P A T R I C K, Ditmars, D I T M A R F.
All right, thank you. Floor is yours.
I wasn't going to call in, but the rest of the speakers have absolutely inspired me. And this mapping slash development idea is unnecessary. This is not a community move. This is a money move. And I urge the people in power to listen to their community and do the right thing. You've heard the health concerns with the water. You've heard the passion of the people who love the nature. And as a former Cherokee cross-country athlete, I can tell you, anyone who runs Marlton knows it's one of the only nice places to run in the town. Uh, please do not ignore the voices you're hearing today as they speak for thousands within the community. Simply toss our concerns aside just to bring in more money would be the opposite of progress and is morally wrong. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and make the community move.
All right, thank you for your comment. All right, moving on to the next caller. Good morning caller, you are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Good morning, my name is Lori Chimento, C H I N E N T O.
All right, thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much for opening us up to, uh, comment on this. We really appreciate that opportunity. I am calling to urge for the designation of protected forest. I know many callers have stated the important environmental impact that this will have, so I'll just summarize that. We know that when forests are cleared, aquifer's ability to recharge drops significantly, allowing more pollutants to enter our water supply and to increase the risk of flooding and contamination, examples of which are being demonstrated nationally. In addition, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection has reported a rise in nitrate levels in storm runoff water. All of these are direct threats to public health, especially for vulnerable communities. The loss of forest lands means more than the loss of trees and irrigated water, overwhelmed infrastructure, and long-term harm to residents. overwhelmed infrastructure, and long-term harm to residents. Development in these areas is a short-term commitment to the wallets of a few at the long-term expense of our environment, health, and future. But in contrast, protecting this area is a lasting commitment to all of us, ensuring clean water, healthy ecosystems, and climate resilience for generations to come. Franklin Roosevelt said, "A nation that destroys its soil destroys itself." Forests are the lungs of our land, purifying the air and giving fresh grace to our people. I recently moved here for a reason, to be a steward of the land and so my family could enjoy the precious gift of nature instead of being tied to screens. Being here reminds me of what truly matters, having access to clean air, safe water, and a space to truly connect with the natural world and to watch that wonder in my children. Designating this area as protected forest is not due to environmental policy, it's public health, infrastructure, and the celebration of our shared legacy. Thank you again for this time and for this consideration.
All right. Thank you for your comment. We're going to move to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Hi, uh, am I, am I on?
You are on.
Awesome. Hi, my name is Carolyn McCraft. It's spelled C A R O L Y N. Last name is McCraft, M C G R A T H. And you'll just have to excuse me, I have a tremor, but I will, I have something to say and I'd like to say it. So I want to echo the sentiments of the previous callers and just to add a little bit of a big picture perspective. So New Jersey is heating faster than the global average. It's heating faster than the Northeast, the rest of the Northeast region. And it's one of the fastest warming states in the country. And you know, we're seeing the results, like the massive floods that we saw yesterday. We've seen flooding throughout the state. Recently, we've seen heat waves and so on. So why is this? One of the reasons is because the amount of developed land in New Jersey. We had built out most of the state, removing many of the natural protections that forested and wetlands, wetlands areas provide. So people talk a lot about how we have to plant lots of trees as a climate pollution, but trees take many, many years to develop. And the protections we need, we need those today. So the most efficient way to do this is to protect existing forests and wetland areas. So again, echoing the statements of the previous callers, I would just urge you to protect the Black Run, Black Run Preserve as a protected forest to the area. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today and for your service.
All right. Thank you for your comment. All right, moving on to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Hi, my name is Alaina Clune. That's A L A I N A C L U N E. And I would just like to speak directly to anyone who remains in support of housing development in the area of Black Run and any other major nature community facing this issue in 2025 and beyond. To those in support of building luxury housing on this historic land, I would ask you, what is the urgency? If you're in a position where you can afford to buy a multi-bedroom house with a back patio and a stainless steel kitchen and all those things you claim to want for yourself, why must you insist upon destroying in order to get the sparkly bathroom inside a spotless house? Why do you insist that there is urgency in doing this? That there is demand? There is not demand in luxury housing. There is demand in making more money. And there always will be. To make money and to have money is the thread that keeps a human from fearing. At least that is how it is supposed to work. I think a lot of the new age thinking and real estate is that people want something clean, something pure. They'd like to step through their door afterwards and see white walls and gray floors that hide the dust. And when they look outside their windows, they want to see 20 houses that look the same so they can feel comfort in their choice. That everybody wants the same thing they want, that everybody else has worked hard around you and now you all get to achieve utopia in a fluorescently lit home. The more lights that are on in your house, you can't see the dark. This is not pureness. This is homogeny. And the more we seek homogeneity, we lose culture. We lose individual identity. And most importantly, in the case of the Black Run Nature Preserve, we lose life. I could substitute that word for the word nature, forests, water, animals, trees, et cetera. But at the end of the day, our world has for a long time favored ending so much life in order to commence some comfort of their own. Comfort does not make you live longer. It does not make you happier. Inside every McMansion is still a toilet you will excrete on, and it's always someone else's problem where your excrement goes. Thank you for listening.
Right. Thank you for your comment. So with that, the phone lines are currently open. If you have a comment you'd like to provide, I know we had a group who was going to call in. Go ahead and call in and please join us. Okay, we got a caller here. Good morning caller. You are live in our hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Hi, yeah, my name is Diane Herbert, D I A N E, H E R, B E R T. I'm a veterinarian and a resident of Camden County in New Jersey. I grew up in Southampton, going hiking and camping in the pine lands and swimming. And I wanted to voice my support for redesignating this area from a rural development area to a forest area to help protect the land for our water supply and for the wildlife. As we all know, wildlife is already struggling. And we really need to try to preserve the areas that are left for the animals. Southern New Jersey is such an important area for migratory birds. And we really need to try to keep what areas are left for the birds that are just passing through New Jersey on their way south and on their way north. Also, as many people have spoken about the aquifer, I have a number of family members who rely on that aquifer for their drinking water. And I know they always feel like it's clean and safe. And I would like to preserve that for them and for whatever water of my own comes from that aquifer. And then I think a couple of people have spoken about flood risks that are increasing and how these, the importance of these wetlands for helping to mitigate that. The natural areas absorb so much water during rains, heavy rains. And as we all know, if that area is developed, then there will probably be a lot more local flooding. And homes that are already existing residents who have lived there for a long time will probably see those negative effects. Maybe not the new homes, because they'll be developed maybe in a way that they will be protected or not at risk. But we will see some flooding to someone in that area if that area is developed. And then as far as the new homes, if they were to be built, someone has already said that homes like that tend to use a lot of lawn chemicals that will pollute the aquifer and the surrounding streams and it will harm wildlife, harm plants. Those luxury homes often also plant a lot of non-native plants in their yards and those will be a threat to any surrounding forest land. A lot of the non-native plants tend to be invasive. And, and I think that if we can just try to do everything we can to preserve that land, it will be the best for everyone. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your comment.
All right.
That's it, yeah.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Next caller. Good morning caller. Can you please mute your computer?
To preserve that land.
Good morning caller. You are live. Hi. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Sure. It's Bill Craig. The last name is C R A I G.
Okay, you're live and the floor is yours.
Okay, thanks. So I am calling in to support the redesignation of the headwaters land from rural development area to forest area. First of all, this is where the pine barrens come closest to me. I'm in Philadelphia. And compared to the core areas in, let's say, the Wharton and Brendan Byrne Forest, it's, it's quick and easy to access, but it's still real deal pine, pine barrens. Second, looking at satellite imagery and maps and so on, it looks as if the preserve is really already largely girded by development. Nevertheless, it seems to be somewhat connected to the south and east still to the larger pine lands region. If those houses were to be built, it would become more of a fragment, more of an island, and so more vulnerable to degradation. So please don't let that happen. And then finally, picking up on the comments made by about, excuse me, low-lying wetlands and flood mitigation. We could maybe say that these often underappreciated natural areas absorb both literally and figuratively the excesses and abuses of human beings. So this is just a little appeal to, to please be smarter and more respectful and let these natural areas be as they are. That's it. Thanks for hearing my comments.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Moving on to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
It's Karen Greenfeld. It's K A R E N G R E E N F E L D. I wanted to talk about what can happen with building up areas around the preserve because I live on the other side of Hopewell in Medford. And an area near us was allowed to build housing and the residents of Medford were upset and they were promised there would be a buffer area around this new development. And it never got put into the deeds, which caused some sort of commotion. Some things were made better, but not totally what it was supposed to be. Something else that happened, a development upstream from us, a mile or two, was being built. And one morning I got up and the lake I'm on was just filled with, well, it looked like it was, it wasn't filled, but was just, couldn't see through it. It was all dirt. I don't know what happened. They think the people who were building didn't have the proper guards around where they were building to prevent the dirt going into the lake. Well, that cleared up somewhat, but it has never, the stream from that development to us has never been as clear as it once was. And there's, even if people make promises to you with their developments, lots of things can go wrong. And therefore, I think it would be better for this area to become forest rather than taking the chance of them saying, well, there's only going to be one house per three acres. As I said, it would be really sad if that happened to the water in Black Run Preserve. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you for your comment. We're going to move on to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Yes, my name is Julie Maravich, J U L I E, M A R A V, as in Victor, I C H. And I live in Burlington County. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My husband and I were just at Black Run Preserve yesterday and we go at least weekly and of course, in the, the busy season of summer, multiple times a week. I support redesignating, drawing the map to forest, protected forest as presented in your demonstration at the beginning of this meeting. I'd like to say two things. One, Black Run is quiet and peaceful. Humans and animals need a hushed area and they need freedom from traffic noises and encroaching humanity, which is so important. And it's the first thing that I notice when I go to Black Run. Also, building homes at the headwaters would be imprudent. How would the fire process, natural fires and managed fires be, be accomplished? It seems like it would increase the, the cost enormously. Fire, as we know, is a necessary process of renewal. And by building in this area, we would disrupt this primeval ecological process. What are the unintended consequences, which would doubtless be detrimental to the ecology of this area over time? And undergrowth created after a fire is essential food source for wildlife. So again, I, I fully support redesignating, redrawing the map lines to protect this forest area. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your call. And with that, the phone lines are open again. The number's on the screen. I know we have over 100 people streaming still. If you're planning to call, please give us, give us a call. Okay, we have a caller. Couple now. Good morning caller. Can you please mute your computer? You are live in our hearing. Hello there. Can you please give your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Hi, my name is Claire Joslyn, C L A I R E, J O S L Y N.
All right. Thank you very much. The floor is yours.
I, I just wanted to call in to echo what everyone else has been saying. Preservation of our land is very important. Mother Nature has only given us so much and the benefits of Mother Nature are so much more important than the greed of corporate development. Yeah, that's basically it. I just really hope we can keep this preserved.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. We're going to move to, thank you. We're going to move to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Hello, my name is Dominic Sorrentino, D O M I, I, let me do that again, D O M I N I C S O R R E N T I N O. I mean, I'm calling just to further echo the sentiment of the previous callers that the Black Run, Black the previous callers that the Black Run, Black Run Forest needs to be preserved, preserved, sorry, I'm just doing this off the cuff. Uh, and I also want to um, also add that like developing, that developing the Black Run Forest, it's not really gonna end up solving anything. Like, some of the previous callers had mentioned, it's only going to make traffic worse. It's gonna cause, it's going to disrupt the natural ecosystem. It's gonna make wildfires and flooding worse. Ultimately, and people use it for recreation all the time. Uh, I mean, ultimately, it's just not a good idea to turn the Black Run Forest into preserve into another suburban development where ultimately, like, if we want to solve, you know, like, make traffic around that area easier or or less terrible, as well as simultaneously have portable housing, we need to like, build denser housing units along public transit lines so that ultimately, it's, you know, like, so we can still have people that can live close together and have community while simultaneously enjoying the peace and love of nature and whatnot. And um, yeah, that's it. Thank you for having this public hearing to begin with.
All right. Well, thank you for your comment. All right. We're going to move on to the next caller. Phone lines are lighting up. Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name? Good morning caller. You are live in our hearing. Can you please state your name for Good morning caller. Can you hear me? Okay, I I think they might not hear me. So let's go to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name, please?
Hi, yes. Um, my name is Kate Brady. And um, that's spelled K.A.T.E.B.R.A.D.Y.
All right. Thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Hi, yes. Um, I am another voice uh, reiterating um, the need to preserve the uh, Black Run Preserve. Um, it is our duty as a society and as citizens of the state of New Jersey to protect our wildlife, to honor our green spaces, and to make sure that the water that is coming to our communities, our society, our wildlife is clean. Um, it is important for us to ensure that these green spaces are maintained, to protect our citizens and our communities from flooding. Um, we know that by bulldozing these areas and building on top of wetlands and continuing to develop them, that we are allowing flooding to happen to our communities by taking away those essential plants and wildlife that help soak up um, extra floodwaters. We are seeing an increase in natural disasters um, of forest fires, of flooding, of extreme temperatures. We need spaces that are green in order to help cool down our state. We have an abundance of warehouses that are being built. We have these gigantic properties that are being built and we do not have green spaces for our communities to go and for our wildlife to live. We're known as the Garden State and yet by bulldozing these essential places, we are changing what is beautiful about our state um, and not honoring those places. I believe it is very important for us to redraw this map so we do not kill off wildlife that is, you know, not anywhere else on this planet. Um, we have some some wildlife in the pine barrens that are not seen anywhere else. And by us continuing to destroy their homes, um, we're losing out on all of this knowledge that our planet is sharing with us that we do not have, that we are killing, harming, and endangering. It's our responsibility to protect them from that type of damage. Um, I'd also like to speak on the importance of clean water. Um, this has just been, you know, revoked. Um, our clean water is no longer, you know, something that is going to be protected federally. Um, and it's our responsibility to our children, our children's children, that clean drinking water is available and that it's something we prioritize. We have the knowledge. We know how to do this. So to not do this is just seems like a very greedy opportunity that could then damage for generations by destroying these essential ecosystems um, that are needed and necessary to maintain clean drinking water and a healthy environment. Um, it's shown that trees cool down environments, that they help clear our soils. So we need them. They are essential. By bulldozing and taking away from this preserve um, and creating this runoff system into our aquifer, we are endangering lives. Um, we would be susceptible to killing people potentially um, over time. I know that seems like a bit of a jump.
Can you wrap up your comments, please? Thank you.
Yeah, of course. I can, I can wrap up my comment. Um, I really, I really appreciate, you know, your time. Um, I do, I do feel like it's very important to preserve this space. Um, thank you for listening to me. I uh, appreciate it and I hope you guys choose to do the right thing. Bye.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Yes, my name is Jason Howell. J.A.S.O.N.W.E.L.L. Hi, Paul.
Hi. So are you calling in from the, from your center there? Just checking.
Yes, we are. Yes, yeah. Um, so I just wanted to voice my support for the rule change. Uh, the Black Run Preserve is, and the Black Run Headwaters is a critical area of the Pines National Reserve and needs to be protected to the highest standard. I'm now going to pass the phone to some of the other participants.
Okay.
Uh, my name is Tom Kenny, uh, T.O.M.K.E.N.N.Y. Uh, I just want to say that I echo all the other statements that have been made here. Strong supporter of this change to preserve the uh, Black Run area and expand it. Uh, so thank you very much.
And state your name and what I'm going to say. Yeah, state your name.
Hi, my name is Tracy Doran, T.R.A.C.E.Y.D.O.R.O.N. Uh, I live in Eastham. Good morning. The Black Run watershed needs to be redesignated from rural development to forest, please. Two surveys were performed for DeVel, revealing fauna of special concern, the woodland box turtle and fowler's toad. A barred owl was photographed, as well as observed and heard responding to a played recording of another barred owl, and evidence was found of the threatened pine barrens tree frog. The drought of the last couple of years has severely taxed the water levels in Black Run, enough to the point several fish witnessed were stranded in a small puddle. I know several wells were hit hard and some ran completely dry. My well was compromised too, with extremely low water levels, and mine is a hundred and fifty foot deep with only one person that utilizes it. Build on top of our aquifer and no one around here will have totable water because the water table will be altered, changing water flow and purity. And let's underline that word, purity. Rezone to forest, please. Clean and accessible drinking water belongs to all, whether you are two-legged or a four-legged. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your call.
Hello, my name is Sheila Woznuk, W.O.Z.N.U.K.N.A.U. I, my grandfather in nineteen thirty-three bought twenty-eight acres on Kennelworth Road in Eastham Township, deeded property to my parents as a wedding gift. I was born and raised there. I believe that the flora and the fauna have advocates, but I also want to advocate for the quality of life of the multi-generational families that live in that area. This will impact their water supply and their uh, yards and and surrounding area. And I would ask you all, please, just, what is your mission statement as the Pines Commission? Read it again and do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call.
Hi there. Uh, my name is Trisha Beeling. That's T.R.I.S.H.A.B.E.L.I.N.G. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am a proud resident of Eastham Township. I live in Little Mill Woods with a trailhead to our beloved preserve just at the end of our street. I am not here today as an expert, a politician, or a developer. I'm here as a mother, a neighbor, and a deeply invested member of this community. Someone who cherishes the balance between family service and the natural beauty that makes the pineland a treasure worth protecting. When my family moved here, we knew we were stepping into something special. We embraced living within the boundaries of a protected ecological region. We rely on well water and we respect the land that we live on. But in recent years, our relationship with the land has changed, not by our choice, but through increasing strain on our natural resources. Since moving here, I have had to seek medical treatment twice a year for skin rashes, rashes that despite multiple tests seem to have no cause other than environmental exposure and yearly changes in our water quality. That's not just uncomfortable, it's frightening. Now with the proposed development on Kettle Run Road, I am terrified of what more pressure on the environment could do, not just to our water supply, but to our ecosystem, wildlife, and the children of future generations. We already pay to ship in clean drinking water to my home, living in the pineland and needing to import water. What does that say about the long-term sustainability of continued development? Our home is over fifty years old. I fear what stacking more development, development near our wells and aquifer will mean. Overdevelopment isn't just a burden, it's a risk to public health, to ecosystem balance, and to our children's future. Since moving here, I've committed myself to this community. I initially joined the Friends of the Black Run Preserve when we moved here because I believe in protecting the little untouched beauty we have left. Today, I ask you to protect my voice, the voice of a mother and a resident within an increasingly close distance to this proposal, who cannot afford to gamble with our health, the voice of a resident who believes community means thinking beyond short-term gain, the voice of someone who knows that once the forests are gone, once the water is compromised, we cannot build our way out of that damage. We chose Eastham because we believe it was, we believed it was a safe place to raise our children in balance with nature. I ask you from the bottom of my heart to help keep it that way. Deny this development and preserve this green space, or at the very least, pause and ask the hard questions about the water integrity, sustainability, ecosystem, and environmental health before a single tree is cleared.
All right. Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Lisa L.A.F.A. Berg, B.E.R.G. I've been a lifelong resident of Eastham Township. And over the past forty years at least, we've come to see massive changes from orchards and apple packing houses to major development, uh, history destroyed, changes in the master plan that were never supposed to be. This developer has operated under shell company names for years and continues to destroy thousands of acres of forest and pines. When they don't get what their opportunity or their way, they threaten with lawsuits, some of which continue today with no one being, holding them accountable. If a farmer chooses to sell to developers, that's one thing, but forests, wildlife, watersheds, ecosystems, can't make that decision. They can't speak. The Pines Commission is looked to and supposed to be the stewards of all pinelands and not do what's best suited for the highest bidder. That applies to Eastham Township officials, who are supposed to do the same and be the stewards of the entire township of Eastham for the residents, taxpayers who elected them and pay their salaries. Neither one is supposed to be just passing the buck and later say, whoops, this got by us. This developer is motivated only by money and greed without a care for the environment, despite owning and living on properties within the pinelands and surrounding lakes. They own land all over Burlington, Camden, and Ocean Counties, just to mention a few, including pinelands, already developed neighborhoods, and farmlands that they've purchased over the years. On our property alone, we've had baby rattlers in the past couple of years, tree frogs. And the baby rattlers are on our property, I assume, because they haven't been able to find the tunnels back into the brookery that was destroyed when, when they built the sanctuary. We've had tree frogs, black pine snakes, rat snakes, ringneck snakes, garter snakes, box and snapping turtles, along with foxes and deer. In the last two to three years, following alleged accidental or undetermined cause and origin fires in Black Run Preserve along Kettleworth Road, Kettle Run Road, Thomas and Mill Road, we've not only seen a decrease in water levels in the surrounding lakes and creeks, but an increase in reptiles and other wet wildlife looking for food. We have large snapping turtles coming out onto our road, leaving the safety of waterways just to find or lay, find food and places to lay their eggs. Boxed turtles annually migrating across our road, still carrying their eggs, but getting run over because of the increase in traffic, just looking for food, grasses, and nesting spots. An increase in not only the numbers of deer, because they've been pushed out of their natural habitats, but not, they're noticeably smaller sizes. They come into our yard ten to fifteen at a time, eating shrubs and plants they haven't touched in seventeen, over seventeen years of living on this, at this location of Eastham Township. Foxes and deer jumping our fences to get in to eat fresh grass, but also to drink fresh water from our in-ground pool. I've transported multiple animals, including young foxes just as recently as last year, suffering from mange, um, and taking them to Cedar Run to be rehabbed. Our question to you, Pines Commission and Eastham Township, is what are you going to do right now to protect a huge loss of the environment, wildlife, and fragile ecosystem? Are you going to sit back and not take a proactive stance and get outsmarted by greedy BSers and then pass the buck later to blame future councils, commissions, local governments? Or are you truly going to stand and do for the right, do the right thing and create a legacy for the future and sustainability of the environment? Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you for your comment.
Okay. Hello, my name is Alena Bromley, A.L.A.I.N.A.D.R.O.M.L.E.Y., and I'm a college student studying to become an equality ecologist. And I believe that Black Run is one of the places that greatly inspired my passion. The Black Run area is a lot of things, but a place for rural development is not one of them. It is a home for endangered and threatened species such as the red-headed woodpecker and the pine barrens tree frog, as well as a site of learning and excitement for nature lovers, a place where the Eastham community comes together to exercise and explore, and a complex ecosystem that is necessary for South Jersey wildlife. The combination of forests and wetlands that this area offers makes it a pristine habitat for our native wildlife. So without this location, thousands of native plants and animals would likely not survive. Our state does not need more destruction of natural areas for rural development. New Jersey is known and characterized by its nature, from the beaches to the forest. And without places like Black Run to keep the natural balance, the wild world of New Jersey would not survive and our state would never be the same. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, my name is Dr. Amy Golden. I have been fighting for protection of the Black Run Preserve since two thousand and seven, when I moved into a house which borders the Black Run watershed. As a trustee and ambassador of the Friends of the Black Run Preserve, I thank you for advancing the Black Run rule proposal, and I implore you to approve the redesignation of the headwaters from rural development to forest area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Are there other commenters on your line?
Yes, one more.
Okay.
William Skinner, last name S-K-I-N-N-E-R. As a 40-year neighbor and frequent visitor to Black Run, the Black Run Preserve, I applaud staff's proposal and would urge you to adopt the Black Run Headwaters redesignation, please. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Paul. That's it for us.
Okay. Thank you for your call. Moving on to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Hi, my name is Nika, N-I-K-A. I have a really long last name. It's Sviirna Vichus, S-V-I-R-I-N-A-V-I-C-H-Y-U-S.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm calling to express my support to redesignate the area around Black Run Preserve as a forest area. I know the trails at Black Run Preserve like the back of my hands, and I'm convinced I could hike the trails with my eyes closed. Development in the Black Run Preserve threatens the unique ecosystem and would harm threatened and endangered species. We have an obligation to preserve these few remaining natural areas. I have a deep connection to the Black Run Preserve. It is a pace, it's a place of restoration and calmness, a space to escape from stressors. It would be devastating for many if this area was developed. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you for your call. We're moving on to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record and include the spelling of your name, please?
Maureen Tomann Logan, T-O-M-A-N-Logan, L-O-G-A-N. I've been a resident of Burlington County for at least 20 years now. I just want to, you know, say that I fully support the previous callers and their efforts to have Black Run Preserve designated as, you know, part of the pinelands and preserved. There, you know, I think that we should be looking at ways to find even more areas to preserve instead of developing more. As was mentioned, there are plenty of places that have already been developed and are out of use right now that can be utilized for this endeavor. This Preserve is, you know, it's important not just for habitat, for the animals there, but it's, it's a place where people in this area of all ages can go to renew themselves mentally, physically, spiritually. And I think that that is something that is very important as well. I want to echo one of the previous callers who mentioned about traffic and the impact that that will have. I live off of Main Street in Marlton, and the increase in apartments and condos in that area has transformed, you know, in a negative way, the flow of traffic and pollutants and so forth in the past decade tremendously. And as I mentioned, we, we really need to look at ways to preserve this area, to find other areas that we can preserve as well. And, you know, I hope that the Pinelands Commission will take all of these callers and our comments into consideration and preserve the Black Run. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Moving on to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please mute your computer?
Callers, our comments, iteration, and their
Good morning caller. Can you please mute your computer?
Thank you for your time.
You are live in our hearing.
Good morning caller.
Good morning caller. You are live in our hearing. Can you please state your name for the record?
Good morning caller. Can you please mute your computer?
Caller, can you hear me?
Are you, are you talking to me?
Yes, I am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, can you please mute your computer?
All right, just one minute. Okay, let me do that. Sorry about that.
Okay. Can you, can you please state your
I also, my name is Rose Taylor, R-O-S-E, Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R. I live in Marlton. And I also am in support of designating this area as protected forest. I believe that this has been on the potential agenda since either 2006 or 2008. So this is not a change in attitude from the community or from the pinelands. And, you know, because there's been this long-term consideration of the property, I know that that has mattered in the past, redesignating a new area. I agree with the concerns for the wetlands. Our family had a car accident in that area. There was something left on the road that when the floods come, sometimes there's pieces of asphalt that come on the road, at Kettle Run Road. And we hit that bump, and once we got into the wetlands, there were no brakes, there was no control. And, you know, we were not able to stop the car. And, you know, it's one thing if we had an accident, but two days later, we went to the same area just to see the area where our car had been, and there were two additional vehicles there two days later in the exact same spot due to that flooding. You know, the traffic is a concern. We no longer take that portion of Kettle Run Road because we consider it a danger. There's also the threatened and endangered species in the area. I know when they were building the sanctuary, they were limited because of the swamp pink and another endangered snake. And, you know, we're just very concerned that because of our water, we live in Marlton Lakes, and we do have wells with very sweet, delicious water. And in the past, a well was nearby in Berlin, and Pinelands Commission did work diligently as a result of, you know, this one well, small well, that was put very close to our property. Burlington County and Camden County are very close there. And our, all of our creeks were drained, and there was almost no water in them when they usually have this wonderful bubbling flow. And so, you know, property development, as one woman warned earlier about the area near their metro section of town, you know, damaged their area. Definitely, it would damage our area. Hookwell Road is very crowded, as well as Kettle Run Road, and it just seems to keep increasing the traffic as more homes and developments have gone up. And it's not, no number is small enough when we're talking about land that has needed to be preserved and has this small piece of, of beauty and luxury of nature just to bathe in. And we appreciate it being there. We appreciate the water on our own property and in our community, and hope that that can be maintained by designating this protected forest that has been on this list since, I was told, either 2006 or 2008. I don't remember what number, the exact number was. So please do designate this protected forest permanently. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your
Appreciate your work.
Thank you for your comment. We're going to move on to the next caller. And while I do, I did note that there is someone else as well who has contacted us to join us via Zoom. Please do not do that. Please call in on the number so that we can get you there. Next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name?
Hello, my name is Francesca Martelli. That's F-R-A-N-C-E-S-C-A-M-A-R-T-E-L-L-I.
Okay. Thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Alrighty. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I'm from Burlington County, and my father and I often love traveling throughout Southern New Jersey. And so much of our travels often involve him reminiscing how much of this land used to belong to farmlands and forests when he was a child. And now, a generation later, I'm witnessing the exact same thing happen to the places I loved. As someone as part of the younger generation, it has been very disheartening to see the interest of the environment and the average working class person be compromised in order to benefit the upper class, especially for housing that myself and my peers don't feel like we will ever be able to afford in our lifetime. I also spend a lot of time working with young children, and Black Run gives lots of opportunities for children to be exposed to nature, which I firmly believe makes them more empathetic towards others, as well as the wildlife around them. And it is what personally inspired me as a child to get into the field of biology, which I am currently studying. The pine barrens are such an important habitat, and here in New Jersey, we have the largest remaining area of this ecosystem. And so to see this land be developed on, I feel would be setting a dangerous precedent. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Moving on to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name? Good morning caller. You are live in our hearing. Can you hear me?
Hello.
Hi there. You're live in our hearing. Can you please state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Jalen Bayaz. It's spelled K-A-Y-L-I-N. Last name is B-A-E-Z. Today I just wanted to share my support for the redesignation of the Black Run Preserve from rural development over to forest area. I believe that developing on this land will compromise the waterways, which could tragically affect eastern species in the area and already endangered species who reside on this preserve. And I don't want to just keep echoing everything everyone said, because I do share the same sentiments. I just wanted to leave you guys with a quote. I hope it's strongly considered. It's a quote from Alanis Obomson, who was an Abenaki from the Ordnock Preserve. He said, back in 1972, "When the last tree is cut, the last fish is caught, and the last river is polluted. When to breathe air is sickening, you will realize too late that wealth is not in bank accounts and that you cannot eat money." So I hope that's strongly considered. It feels like a very big cash grab, and I hope that it's considered. People are considered and animals are considered. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your call. And we're going to move on to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name? And can you please mute your computer?
Hello?
Hi. You are live in our hearing?
Hi.
Can you give
My name is Kristi Steglik, S-T-E-G-L-I-K. My husband and I retired to Willow Ridge after 20 years in the Army, and we were quite appalled to hear about this proposed development. We do support rezoning this area as a protected forest state, and think that it is incredibly selfish and disconnected of our representatives to consider impacting our community for a very few amount of people. That is all I have to say. I do agree with all the environmental impact, but the economic impact is substantial as well.
All right. Well, thank you for your call. And we're moving on to the next caller.
Okay.
Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling of your name, please?
Yes, my name's Maria Pizzato, M-A-R-I-A, Pizzato, P-E-Z-Z-A-T-O. How are you?
Thank you for calling.
You're welcome. I was just calling to please beg the Pinelands Commission. I've been a resident of Mefford. I grew up in Mefford. I was a Mefford resident for 28 years. I now live in Kings Grant, next to the Black Run Preserve area. And this area is very important for endangered species. I, I'm an avid birder, and I hear barred owls. First time in my life that I've heard them over here. So I am begging you not to develop this area. We do not need more luxury homes. I remember when I was growing up, the Pinelands Commission was very strict. You couldn't even, you had to ask permission to build the shed on your, on your lot. Now it seems like we're just going to bulldoze forest. I'm very upset about that. And I'm just, please, go back to what you're made for, protecting this area that's very beautiful around us. And we don't need, the headwaters is a very important port, part of the environment. It controls all of our, all of our streams in the area, which, when you build, it causes runoff and pollution of the waters. Wetlands are important. They control flooding of the area, as everyone knows here. So please take this all into consideration and take into these comments and, and messages you've been getting from the people who live here now. Please take that into consideration. We really, I've talked to my neighbors here in Kings Grant. We really don't want this here. So, and please do it for the, the animals and the ecosystem here. Okay? And that's all I wanted to say. And, and thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your call. We're going to move to the next caller.
Callers
Good morning caller. Can you please mute your computer? Thank you. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling?
My name is Mandy Skalski, M-A-N-D-Y-S-K-A-L-S-K-I.
Okay. Thank you very much. The floor is yours.
I just wanted to add, aside from protecting nature, the lands and water and animals that everyone has already spoken to, we need to protect the space for our mental, mental and physical health of the humans in this area. I'm a part-time employee at an outdoor co-op within the town of Marlton. And every day, hundreds of people come into the store and let me know how much they appreciate using all of Black Run Preserve. And if we were to add more development into that area, it would definitely have an impact on the existing trails and area and watershed that is preserved there. Also, with federal lands potentially being sold off, we must stop and protect our local lands. And lastly, a Native American proverb that I found striking, "We don't inherit nature, we borrow it from our children." So if we were to let this land be developed and not rezone it as a forest area, we are taking away that nature from our children, grandchildren, and future generations. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Moving on to the next caller. Good morning caller. You are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling?
Yes, sir. My name is Amy Gonzalez, A-M-Y-G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z. Forgive the hoarse voice here. I'm recovering from a seasonal illness. Anyway, I appreciate this time of public comments. And as a resident, lifelong resident of East Sham Township, and a sitting member of the East Sham Environmental Commission, I want to just be on record as firmly supporting the redesignation of this tract of land from buildable to a forested area. For the multiple reasons I joined with the other callers, for all of their reasons, I stand with them on that. And I would just like to encourage the listeners and those that have called in or that are listening and calling in or writing me during the period that is available till August 14th, I believe. I would just encourage everyone to participate and support your Pinelands Commission, as well as the Pinelands Preservation Alliance, and to work with your township officials. Join a zoning board, join an environmental commission, learn and work with everybody for the conservation of our lands. All of you know how important it is, and advocacy is great, needed greatly in all areas. And I am very appreciative of all of those who pushed out the messaging and that you've had such an enormous response is very encouraging to me. But how much more of a response could we have, knowing that each one of us can do something? So I appreciate all the callers, and I just want to encourage everybody to take that next step in your own personal activism for the preservation and conservation of our wildlife, our lands. in your own personal activism for the preservation and conservation of our wildlife, our lands and ourselves. Thank you so much for this time.
Okay, thank you for your comment. We're going to move on to the next caller. Good morning caller, you are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling?
Hi, uh, my name is Teresa Mullen, T E R E S A Mullen, M U L L E N. Thank you for allowing me to take this time to give a public comment on the matter. Um, I am an environmental scientist and once I was made known about this project, I just, of course, had to do my research and add a quick comment. Um, I just think that allowing this development without the rezoning, um, in the Black Run Preserve's headwaters would prioritize profit over health, over the New Jersey's residents. And I think that, um, to protect this irreplaceable resource is, um, invaluable as there are not many green spaces left in this country. And I think it's pretty shameful, um, and would send a clear message that companies are more valued that, and choose a short-term profit over protecting the drinking water and one of New Jersey's remaining critical green spaces. And I just think that there are other areas for development with, that can, um, facilitate economic growth in areas with less critical green space and without the environmental and ecological impacts that developing in this area would cause. And that's all.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
And we are moving to the next caller. Good morning caller, you are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling?
Hi, uh, my name is Olga Kotulash. Um, it is O L G A and then the last name is K O T U R L A S H.
Thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Oh, excuse me?
Go ahead and speak. The floor is yours.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Oh, got it. Thank you, thank you.
I'll get
Uh, yeah, so, um, I, I have, I moved to, uh, Metford very recently. Uh, we purchased the house, but before I lived in Berlin. And, um, Black Run Preserve, uh, for me specifically and us is very valuable. Um, that's kind of like our, our safe space. That's where we would go, uh, to hike after work. It was a beautiful place. That's actually where my boyfriend proposed to me. Um, and we moved to Metford really hoping to kind of stay in the area and then keep continuing visiting Black Run Preserve and hopefully bring our kids there in the future. And, um, yeah, just the idea of, uh, zoning in the area and then kind of ruining the natural beauty of the park is very disheartening and upsetting to hear. Um, because I think Black Run Preserve, Preserve brings so much value to the community and younger people. Um, there aren't many natural places, truly natural places, the way that Black Run is. And, um, I think we should just take the opportunity to preserve it as much as we possibly can. Um, and I think the community just finds so much value in it. Um, and for future generations, I think this is our part to, to take a stand for it. So, thank you so much. That's all.
Thank you for your comment.
Keep them. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. And moving on to the next caller.
This is our part.
Good morning caller, can you please mute your computer? Thank you.
Of course.
Can you please mute your name for the record, including the spelling?
Yes, hello, my name is Carly Degiroamo, that's spelled C A R L Y D E G I R O L A M O. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to participate in this public hearing. Um, I just want to emphasize my strong support of the protection of the forest surrounding the Black Run Preserve through the redesignation from rural development area to forest area. Um, and just want to speak briefly, as the speakers before me made excellent points for the importance of preserving this land through rezoning. Um, I want to emphasize the popular opinion of local residents to keep this land undeveloped, but also the opinion of the not-so-local residents. Um, the Black Run Preserve is a great location for ecotourism. The Preserve brings money to local businesses from hikers and visitors recreating in the Preserve. Um, and if there, uh, were to be any disruption in the Preserve from any development whatsoever, um, it would affect the ecotourism and this economic benefit to the local area. In addition to the benefits of ecotourism, it is important that the forest areas surrounding the Black Run Preserve are protected for the purposes of flood mitigation, water quality protection, um, ecological protection and preservation and historical preservation. Ultimately, if we look at the rezoning of this area with an economic lens, any economic benefits from development projects in the forest surrounding the Black Run Preserve occur in the short term and do not compare to the long-term economic benefits of preserving this land. This is due to the protections this land provides from the increase in extreme weather events due to climate change, the value of preserving water quality for the surrounding areas, uh, and avoiding future huge water quality improvement projects that would result due to, uh, potential development on this land and the value of preserving the ecology of this land and the value of ecotourism and recreating on land. Um, thank you again for your time and the opportunity to participate in the hearing.
Okay, thank you for your comment. And we're going to move on to the next caller. Good morning caller, can you please mute your computer? Thank you very much.
Hello?
Hi there, can you please state your name for the record, including, uh, the spelling?
Yes, my name is Susan Pettijohn, S U S A N P E T T I J O H N.
Thank you very much.
I'm a lo- I'm a long-term resident of Eastham Township, a frequent visitor and a volunteer ambassador at the Black Run Preserve. And I thank the Commission for thoughtfully managing the Pinelands Preserve throughout the state and for proposing this amendment to change the designation of the headwaters of the Black Run to Forest. The Pinelands Preserve extend beyond the township, municipality and county borders and the impact of any development in the pine, pine lands extend beyond the township, municipality and county borders. The pine lands are all connected. Development of the headwaters area would not just impact the Black Run, Eastham Township, Burlington County and the neighborhoods surrounding the headwaters. It would impact the Rancoas watershed that flows to the Delaware River, the Kirkwood Cohanty aquifer, habitat and food sources for migratory birds, insect life, wildlife and all the adjacent pine lands. Thank you for proposing an amendment that would protect not just Black Run, Eastham Township, Burlington County and the neighborhoods surrounding the headwaters. This amendment to redesignate this area as forest will protect a vital and fragile piece of the pine lands. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And we're going to move to the next caller. Good morning caller, you are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling?
Yeah, first name is Annelisa, A H N E L I D S E. Last name is Solwaczny, S O L W A C Z N Y.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I just wanted to start out by saying thank you for providing an opportunity to voice our opinions on this matter. Um, I'll keep this brief just by stating that I support to preserve the integrity of this preserve. Uh, natural ecosystems across our country continue to be utilized and destroyed for selfish reasons. So I urge developers to not only have sympathy for our wildlife, but to consider the holistic consequences of continuing to devastate our planet. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. We're going to move on to the next caller. Good morning caller, can you please state your name for the record, including your spelling? You are live in our hearing.
Hello, my name is Rosemary Bernardi, it's R O S E M A R Y, last name Bernardi, B and B O Y, E R N I T A R D and David I.
All right, thank you.
I'd like you to, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak today. Um, I actually live in, uh, Kings Grant, so Black Run Preserve is kind of in my backyard. Um, as I was reading the Commission's white paper, it's clear that this issue has been thought, thoughtfully studied, going back to two thousand four, two thousand six, two thousand nine, and again in two one and fourteen. It's time to move forward and adopt the forest designation for this area. I also want to echo what the previous speakers have said. They made several strong and compelling points and I fully support the remarks. This land isn't just vacant acreage, it holds historical and cultural significance. It was run time to millenite Lenopai people, later part of the Milker settlement, and eventually cared for by the Quakers who valued peace and the stewardship of the land. That legacy matters and it should be respected. From an environmental perspective, this area is critical. It supports diverse wildlife, native flora and fauna, and it plays a vital role protecting our aquifer and watershed. This, that affects not just Eastham, but neighboring towns like Metford, Warthie, Berlin and all downstream communities that depend on clean water and a healthy ecosystem. There is also broad and public organizational support for this change. Groups like the Friends of the Black Run Preserve, the Pinelands Preservation Alliance, with over eighteen hundred petition signatures, the New Jersey Conservation Foundation, Sierra Club, Climate Revolution New Jersey, New Jersey Action and the Native Plant Society have all put out alerts and notices and many others who have voices of support. The community is paying attention and it wants preservation, not over development. And while I'm here, I'm going to make a shameless plug. If you haven't already, please consent and join in the Friends of the Black Run Preserve. It's a great way to get involved and support long-term conservation of unique landscapes. Now let's talk about economics. The school, the state school funding formula is based on equalized base valuation of the land of resident income. A development of two hundred sixty-five or plus luxury homes likely priced at seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and above will primarily dual-income households, which directly reduce the amount of state aid our district receives. That means a greater share of school funding would come from the local taxpayers. And that's just the beginning. The district would also face the real cost of educating the significant number of new students. Add that to the increased amount of police, fire, EMS, roads and MUA services and the costs multiply. All this gets pushed onto the backs of the existing residents. In short, this is about doing what's right environmentally, historically and economically. The time to act is now. Please move forward with the forestry designation. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Right, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
And there are no callers currently on the line, so we have an open line. Good morning caller, you are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling?
Hi, my name is Dan Donnelly, uh, D A N D O N N E L L Y.
Okay, thank you very much. The floor is yours.
I am here to speak in strong support of rezoning the Black Run Headwaters and surrounding areas as Pineland Forest. This region, as we all know, is ecologically sensitive and home to rare species and vital water resources that feed into the larger Pinelands ecosystem. The Pinelands Commission was created to protect areas exactly like this, areas of high ecological value that serve as the backbone of the pine barrens biodiversity and water integrity. To leave this land vulnerable to development by not rezoning it would directly contradict the founding, founding, founding mission and purpose of this commission. The forest area designation would offer at the highest level of protection, protection it clearly merits. This isn't just a matter of zoning, it's a matter of holding the core values that define the Pinelands Protection Act. I urge you to follow the science, honor your mandate and do what's right for future generations. Rezone this land as Pinelands Forest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. And there are no callers after that.
Callers, or anybody else, or?
There are no other callers.
Okay. Um, I think at this point, I'll just remind everyone, if you didn't get an opportunity to call in, please consider submitting written comments. Please go to our website for those details. You have another month to do that through August fifteenth, so plenty of time. If you have any questions that you want to ask, you know, feel free to email and we'll, uh, we'll do our best to provide the information you need. Um, thank you all very much for taking the time to join us this morning. And I think with that
You did just receive another caller.
Oh, one more, okay, they snuck in, one more. All right.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay, one more.
Okay. Good morning caller, you are live in our public hearing. Can you please state your name for the record, including the spelling?
Yes, good morning, this is Vanessa Garcia, V A N E S S A D A R C I A. Um, I'm calling as a lifelong New Jersey resident, just to say pretty much what everyone else has said, but we're seeing record-high heats, tornado threats, like I've never seen this, um, before in, in my lifetime and I know it's only going to get worse. So we're seeing the active effects of climate change and we saw some of that last night with severe flooding that occurred in the state. Uh, we should be doing everything within our control to mitigate where we can. So, um, requesting that we redesignate the lines. And if we're going to build, there's evidence that shows that poorly planned housing development leads to more sprawl, like increased congestion, congestion as others have already stated and traffic. And thoughtful urban planning is essential to creating sustainable communities. Uh, and that includes preserving our, that includes preserving our green space. That starts with preserving the space that's around us. So I would like to highly encourage you to reconsider and redraw the lines. That's all.
Okay, thank you for your comment. And that was the last comment, I believe, most caller.
Okay, um, it's eleven thirty-eight, so we're going to close the hearing. Um, and again, if you didn't get a chance to call in or you were too late or you were busy this morning, that's fine. Please, um, consider submitting email and written comment, which will be then added to the record as part of, um, the, the Commission's consideration when the rule adoption is considered. Thank you all very much.